I'd like to welcome everybody. This is City of Ellensburg City Council meeting for the evening of Monday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. Led by council members. Morgan and Lamb, who we would note, this will be their last meeting. Thank you. If the clerk would call the roll.
Elliot.
Here.
Goodlow.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Locust.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Tab.
I'm here. Thank you. Let's see, let me get down into this agenda, past our stuff. I didn't see any proclamations or words. Recognition. Anything such as that? Let's. Brings us to approval of the agenda. I would ask council to amend the agenda, adding a new item six A. Under communication. We would like to read into the record a statement on the Core Street issues that we've been having. And our communication with the school district.
Mayor move the amended agenda second.
Motion second to amend the agenda included new six A. For statement on the record of the issues around Core Street and Idina Nation Veronica School. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I to vote aye, that motion carries. Then I would accept a motion for the, to approve the agenda as amended.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
My motion second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I to vote aye, that motion carries, brings us to consent.
Mayor move consent agenda.
My motion second to approve a consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
I to vote aye, that motion carries. I'm listening to my second. Okay, so then that brings us to six A. We're actually not on page one thirty in our agenda yet. We'll start, that'll be the six B. We thought that we would take the opportunity, if I may, to we as city council members and as city staff have received numerous emails. And citizen input during it non-agenda on issues that have arisen around the opening under a temporary certificate of occupancy for Idina Nation Veronica School. It's further come to our attention that the school district has communicated with parents and students. And we feel that at a minimum, we need to one, recognize that we have worked diligently with the school district. To address the issues that have been raised by not only the people who have come before council and before the school board. But also the issues that our own staff have recognized, acknowledged, and worked diligently to attempt to address. So if you'll bear with me. Again, I want to, I want to emphasize that the City of Ellensburg staff has worked collaboratively with the Ellensburg School District since the school projects, construction projects began. It is in everyone's interest that we achieve a positive outcome, that the schools are built, that they are safe, and that the students are receiving the education that the Ellensburg School District is known to provide. The project changed several times from the point at which the bond passed. We do recognize there is a significant amount of work that's gone into these projects and addressing the logistical challenges of operating schools. At the same time that, that the two, well, in essence, three major construction projects, the remodel of Lincoln, construction of the new Mount Stewart and Idina Nation Veronica. Ultimately, that project did, were two new elementary schools were built on adjacent parcels. Mount Stewart, New Mount Stewart and Idina Nation Veronica Elementary. The second school presented specific complexities and unique challenges. It's, it is in fact on a dead end street. There are half-street improvements and it cost crosses the Palooza Cascade State Parks Trail. As we go through this, it is important to understand the roles that each of the institutions and staff play. In putting a project of this complexity together. As the developer, the school district is responsible for design and construction for their project with all associated public improvements. Ellensburg School District hired OAC throughout of Spokane through a design build contract oversee the design, construction, and remodel for the three elementary schools. The contractor OAC hired an engineering firm to design the project. This engineer of record is responsible for comply compiling the data to model and evaluate the needs of the project. And design the buildings and infrastructure to meet all city code. And design standards. The City of Ellensburg did review those plans and reports submitted by the school district design team and issued a building permit for the construction. Approval of the permit was based on ESD's engineers professional certifications that the design would comply with the city standards, fire code, and applicable building code and industrial industry requirements. There are many standards that must be met through design, but an issue with the current project are the following. The city design standards specifically call for no queuing of crawl cars across sidewalks and onto city streets. I'd be glad to repeat that one if anybody would like. The international fire code further has specific requirements for needed emergency access. And I would note that the international fire code, as council member Elliot could attest to, is not a city code. The international fire code is just that. It's a fire code adopted by fire professionals at an international level, which we adopt and then, or and then implement. Mount Stewart Elementary School opened in September. The first two weeks of that school of school resulted in significant backup or queuing of vehicles on Core Street. The city immediately shared those concerns with the school district, the school district administration, and their contractor were closely with staff, city staff to resolve those issues by expediting the opening of the second parking lot in the first few weeks. Mount Stewart staff worked hard to create efficiencies in their practice to improve traffic flow and is I know a number of council members have gone out. I know staff have gone to observe. And I would personally say that from the initial opening and the issues there to today, the Mount Stewart, the steps taken in conjunction with City of Ellensburg staff and the, and the school district have really alleviated the concerns around the new Mount Stewart School. The initial queuing with, yeah, with the Mount Stewart School. From the, and concerns from public costs, concerns with city staff regarding the opening of Idina Nation Veronica. The new school has a similar number of students that, but there are more site constraints, only one parking lot with fewer stalls and a smaller student pickup lane. Cities concerns were then shared with the school district on multiple occasions. Including a detailed email from the city manager to Superintendent Harbor on October fifteenth. Included in that email were specific requirements for the district to meet for their temporary certificate of occupancy at Idina Nation Veronica. That included a reconfiguration of the sick of the pickup system if pickup and drop off systems were not working as designed. And by that I means can tar, the cars continued to queue up on Core Street creating congestion and safety issues. City staff continued monitoring Core Street since the opening of Idina Nation Veronica on October twenty-fifth. And again, I want to just be clear that that initial opening was that, that occurred recognizing that there was a need for students to be able to attend Idina Nation Veronica so that the, so that the remodel of Lincoln could proceed in a timely way. Staff, from my perspective, worked hard at that point to both put the conditions in place, but also ensure that the school district was, and that school was open for students. We continued to monitor Core Street since the opening on October twenty-fifth. We've documented, the city staff have documented the queuing of vehicles on Core Street to last thirty to thirty-five minutes and at times are up to forty-five vehicles long. The backup of vehicles on Core Street create significant safety concerns. Vehicles and buses have used the center non-travel area of Cora to pass the queue on a regular basis. Vehicles in the queue pull out to make U-turns with, when children walking or walking from school and find their parents stuck in line. The queue fills the parking lot between parked cars, which significantly impact emergency vehicle access and response. These safety concerns were shared with ESD. And again, I, I want to just stop for a moment and emphasize the concern on the ability for emergency vehicles to access that school under the current conditions. Is not acceptable. Given observations and the lack of acknowledgement by the school district. The city hired a tra- transportation consultant, Fair and Peers to evaluate the functionality of the student pickup time at, at the elementary school. The consultant called out safety concerns and recommended to the school district providing, provide design options to eliminate the queuing. Fire Marshal Joe Delvo issued a statement containing cert- safety concerns and code violations for traffic flow into Idina Nation Veronica. And I want to again emphasize that, that, that the fire marshal is operating within a context of the international fire code. And his determinations are not guided by city staff. His determinations of the safety and the efficiency of that pickup are guided by his roles and responsibilities as a fire marshal to ensure the safety and adequacy of any, any of what's occurring at Idina Nation. He outlined the safety and code violations for traffic inflow into Idina Nation. The city then sent a letter to the school district on November nineteenth, including the fair and pair, fair and peers. Report. And the letter from the fire marshal with a request for immediate action to resolve those issues. The city did not dictate any particular solution to the problem. But we have suggested a range of alternatives with which we would be glad to continue the conversation and work with the district to alleviate the problems that exist. I do again want to emphasize that while the city does not dictate a particular solution. It is in fact the project manager or the school district's responsibility to address the code violations and issues of safety that are, that are, that, that are presented by the current configuration on Corin Idina Nation. The school district's contractor suggested a no-cost recommendation to the city engineer to double stack the parent pickup lane through the Idina Nation parking lot. In front of the school on December third. This option was briefly discussed and determined not to be a viable, not to be viable because of safety concerns, both from city staff and from KVFR or the fire marshal. ESD's failure to offer any meaningful solution to correct the safety issues that were created by the opening of the school left the city no alternative but to issue the cease and desist order on December tenth. And in essence, what the cease and desist order, and I don't want to get ourselves into, but fundamentally, what, what the city was saying to the district at that point is there are significant safety issues that have been identified. If you are not moving forward to address those issues. Then it's considered code violation. And there are fines and actions, further actions which could be taken. The, and I, so that action was, was again, not intended to be punitive. That action was merely intended to create a deadline for accountability for the district. The city's interest is, is not to revoke a temporary certificate of occupancy. The city's interest is that the students, faculty, parents and sta- and, and, and staff are safe. It's really just that simple. So our true interest in all of this and the need for this conversation is that our primary interest is simply to gain compliance from the district. Also want to be clear that even as I read this. We have reached out to the district. We will continue to work with district staff and the district team on a solution to these issues. We all, and I cannot emphasize this enough, we all want safe conditions for our students, staff, family, families, users of the trail, and simply this community. So hopefully, as we move forward. We have a frame, a framing and a con- and a context for this conversation. And that there's a clear understanding of the steps that the city is taking and will continue to take to address the issues that have arisen at Idina Nation Veronica. With that. Okay, I'm done. Can't go home now? Let me know, right? Okay, so let's, we'll move on then to boards and commission appointments. I believe that we had two. We're now at page one thirty in our packets. We had two applicants that we were introduced to whom we were introduced at the last meeting. One was Jordan Rule, who had applied for the Affordable Housing Commission. And the other was Raven Harland, who had applied for the, I think it was Environmental Commission, right?
Yes.
And I believe I would move forward with, with your blessing to appoint both for the Jordan Rule to the Affordable Housing Commission and, and Raven Harland to the Environmental Commission.
Second.
So we have a motion second to appoint Jordan Rule to the Affordable Housing Commission and Raven Harland to the Environmental Commission. Is there any further discussion? Of all those in favor?
Aye.
I to, I to vote aye, that motion carries. We still have one opening on the Environmental Commission, I would note. And then our Building Appeals Board, but. Okay, that moves us then to six B. I better catch up with my.
Actually, six C.
See, I'm so sorry.
You succeed.
We're on page one thirty-six. And this is surplus property discussion for Catherine Park and Whitfield Triangle. Is there a staff report?
There is, Your Honor. I'm Heidi Behren Sternaway, City Manager, and I'll do a brief report. We tried to capture everything in your staff report today. So this discussion on surplus property actually rose on this summer through a discussion on on surplus for affordable housing. And with the discussion with the housing action plan. Folks were looking at our, do, does the city have underutilized properties that we would like to release back to the residential market? And so in two thousand and seventeen, you did initial survey of city-owned property, fee simple property that could be potentially surplus for the, the purpose of affordable housing specifically. And, and, and actually for other purposes as well. And a number of those parcels were surplus. We have two areas that were surplus for affordable housing, you know, or in process. One is the first in Pine. There are two parcels at that site. And the other is the Water and Bender Street. I'm currently working with Habitat for Humanity on affordable housing project there with eighteen single-family homes. So the discussion about, again, looking at underutilized properties, we looked at that list as well. And two properties were identified. They're both part in the perks inventory list. And what I'd like to do is address each one separately, specifically looking at whether or not you want to move forward. This is a council discussion tonight. This is not a council action. We're not asking you to actually surplus anything. But to provide staff direction through this discussion. We've had a fair amount of public input, both that you've been emailed and then we've had some letters that have been delivered. Some of those are in your packet. And so I know there's folks that actually would like to weigh in on both parcels tonight. So I'll start with the Whitfield Triangle and we'll walk through. And before I do that, I wanted to frame the discussion, I guess, that might help you walk through your, your deliberations on what to do. And that is really, you know, asking for staff guidance on whether or not to continue with any surplus actions on one or both of the parcels. And a recommendation, if we were to move forward with surplus as to which funds the proceeds, if we were going to sale should be created, credited. And the other is if there is a desire to transfer property for the purpose of the, of affordable housing. And whether or not covenants or restrictions should be imposed in conjunction with the sale or disposition of any parcel. So a quick review of, we'll start again with the Whitfield Triangle. So the Whitfield Triangle is just less than a third of an acre on Craig's Hill on Fourth Avenue and just north of Fourth Avenue and Alder Street. And the Whitfield Triangle essentially was donated along with Reed Park in nineteen thirty-three from the county. And the conditions under which the land was donated really included provisions that the property remain in public ownership, but in nineteen sixty-three, the county actually authorized the city to surplus as as the, that specific property wasn't suitable for park purposes. And it can, it's a small triangular shaped piece of property. And so the, the city actually went through a surplus process in nineteen sixty-three and surplus the property for residential use and the property had some conditions on it. One of those conditions is if it wasn't developed within a year, then it would come back to the city and the property eventually came back to the city. So it's been in the parks inventory. It's not in a master planned parks. It's not a master planned park. In fact, we haven't even had a garbage can on that, that facility. So no improvements. It does have irrigation. The city actually does mow it. And there's a little bit of juniper hedging on it as well. So this, there are no conditions at this point that would restrict the city from, from surplusing this parcel or, or, or keeping it. And so again, the proposal from the community was a group of neighbors have written in requesting that the, the property could potentially be considered for a a community service project if the city was interested in supporting a tot lot or playground equipment. Our perks recommendation from staff was because of the slope of the property, there'd be a significant amount of parks moved. There's also a number of other neighborhood parks within a mile of the property. It's fairly well-served. And if we were going to do playground equipment, incorporating something like that into Reed Park would be actually more, more it would receive a higher recommendation. And so, so I know again, there are a number of folks here that would like to weigh in on this and the staff could certainly answer questions that you have as well.
Okay, I think what we could do perhaps is do public comment on first and then counsel if your question specific to this parcel, kind of go from there. I believe that there's some folks, so a couple of things. If there's anyone in the chambers who would like to speak to this. So again, this is the surplus part property, park property discussion for the Whitfield Triangle. Anybody wish in the room to speak to that? I believe there are some folks on the virtually that have submitted or have signed off on some of the letters that came to us. Does anybody wish to speak to this that's attending the meeting virtually? If you can raise your hand. Oh, that was good. I was going to make a comment about your age and your ability to find where you could raise your hand in Zoom, but you did well. So I think we've got Bill Meyer. And looks like you're unmutted.
Thank you. Basically, my comment would be that I'm available here if people have questions. I believe that I've said most everything that I would like to say. I did submit another letter today. I don't know if it made it into your packet. But
No, I didn't.
I don't believe it did though.
I forwarded that by email.
Okay. Then I'll try to briefly summarize what's in the letter. But we, you know, we understand that the interests of the council are to, because of budgetary reasons and also for trying to provide more billable lots for affordable housing, they're looking at this parcel as a, to consider for putting up for into the real estate market. The concern that we have is because of the fact that the, the comprehensive plan, the first part of that goal is to preserve, protect, and strengthen the vitality and development of existing neighborhoods. We feel that the disposal of the property to unknown development, it could range anywhere from a potential weed lot to possibly McMansion. You know, both of these situations are inconsistent with that initial part of the comprehensive plan housing goal. So if the council does determine that it would want to move ahead with that disposal process for the parcel, we're recommending that they, in order to protect the surrounding residential housing, that there are definitely conditions and terms that should be added to the sale of that property. We, we have reviewed the previous action, that resolution nineteen sixty-three dash seven. And section two does provide a number of listed conditions that apply to that sale. And we think that those would still apply in this situation here if the council decided to sell that parcel. If they didn't decide to sell the, the parcel and continue with it as a park. We, we had again previously spoke about putting or providing for children's playground equipment. And we did, I of course did review the staff's recommendation that was submitted and Brad Case's report. And they had some recommended modifications which would be would require a less site preparation and, and such, such as basically benches and additional trees for canopy. Also the just a garbage disposal cans that type of thing. And that certainly sounds like something that would be workable. We have a number of anonymous donors that have pledged up to forty thousand dollars to help with the project, improvement project there. So we are supportive of the park remaining as a park and willing to help support a project there should the council decide to keep it as a park and make improvements. So that's basically it. If you have any questions, I'm open to answer those for you.
Great, thanks. Let's see if anyone else would like to provide testimony. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, see no one. I'll just, what I'll do, let's just throw it open for council. Questions of staff? Or Dr. Meyer?
Or comments? We're not ready for comments by council.
Well, yeah.
I was a little surprised to see the terminology used of McMansion. Considering that several of the homes which are above this house, they probably fall into that category. So it might be a little awkward. It's kind of like pot calling the kettle black. But that to the side, our height limit is thirty-five feet, which is not going to obstruct anyone's view. To me, the property is unsuitable without great, a great deal more expense than forty thousand dollars to create a park for children to play in with play equipment and stuff like that. I think the highest and best use of that ground, considering it's eight thousand square feet, it's not a large lot. It's a standard city sized lot. I'm not sure it's a third of an acre. I don't know where that came from because I don't think eight thousand square feet is a third of an acre. But maybe I can't do numbers in my brain anymore. But to me, this property should be sold at market price. And somebody can build a single family residence. I'm fine with us putting in a limitation that they can't build a house over three thousand square feet or something like that. If that's, that certainly would be within the realm of the houses surrounding it. Actually smaller than several of them. So I don't know what council wants to do, but from my standpoint, this seems like a single family residential site. I've wondered for a long time what it, why it hasn't been used for that purpose.
Thank you. Other comments?
I, I would like to see the city hang on to this property, at least for a while. See if anything else comes up. It's very small space. It's very remote. Oh, sorry. I would like to see the city hang on to this property and not surplus it at this time. That would be my preference.
Council member, can you clarify for me what, what do you mean if something else came up?
Well, there might be another use. There might be another way to use that area that we have, that we don't even know about, that nobody has mentioned yet. I like the idea of having a green space where people, if they wanted to go sit, that's a really nice little area back in there. And that's I kind of like that. I know that in the letter that we received from granddaughter of Mr. Whitfield, who donated this property, that was, that is her position on that piece of property in terms of honoring her grandfather. So that's, that's what I'm thinking about now.
Unless Tristan.
I have something, but no, focus.
Thank you. I agree, it should be I think it should be surplus. My, part of my goal is to get rid of all the small little parcels scattered all over that are costing the city in terms of maintenance, but not adding significantly to the recreation or, you know, any other purpose. This is a block essentially from a nice park. I think that in terms of honoring Mr. Whitfield, I agree. He deserves honor. And I think that as we work through the Reed Park Development Plan, Parks, Parks Plan, that should be a factor incorporated into that plan. You know, in terms of the questions here, I think that we should sell the property at fair market value and put the money into our affordable housing fund.
I agree with everything council member Lilquess just said.
So are we at a point then we can get a motion?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I would, I agree with their comments. And I also was going to emphasize the fact that the potential development of play facilities in Reed Park is something that I know hasn't really been contemplated before. And I think given that we've been spending some time over the last couple of years looking at access and parking and circulation, I would think our parks and that department will want to dive into that or could if we direct so. I'm also not a fan of expanding our park system base sort of disproportionately in the sense that we've got other areas in our community that are underserved. We've got a park system that is not currently sustainable, financially speaking. We don't have adequate resources currently to apply to our system. And expanding it, even in a small incremental way, I think isn't really consistent with our obligations system wide. So I like the idea of surplusing. I too would want, when we get to that point, I would want to because it was our original conversation two or three years ago. The intent here was to identify parcels that are suitable either for use, the development of affordable housing, or to generate revenue that could be then used to support a development of affordable housing. So.
So let's, I mean, I'm hearing a consensus emerge here from council. Let's, I mean, Nancy, I think you could take the first two bullets with your.
So I can, I'll move to surplus Whitfield Triangle. And at, and sell at fair market value. And, and use the proceeds of the sale for, in our affordable housing fund.
Give me a second.
Second.
So a motion second to move forward with the surplus of the Whitfield Triangle Park with funds at fair market value, with any funds from proceeds from that sale credited to the affordable housing fund.
Can I ask a question? So I know that that motion is in concert with the vision that we've, we've set. And I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I would prefer that we keep the park, but I don't understand how it's an expansion of the park system. Member Miller, you referred to that. And a question I have for council member Lilquess is why not put that money in the Parks and Rec budget?
I would agree.
Yeah, I can respond since I was referenced on that one. In terms of expansion, I recognize that it's sort of been documented as part of the system, but it's never been, there's never been a capital improvement expenditure. So what I mean by expansion was just that. In order to turn it into a fully functional park, it would require investment, right? Whatever that is. The council member Morgan's point, probably a lot more than forty thousand dollars. As far as the use of the funds, I, you know, it is a small parcel. I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with the revenue going into the Parks Department as well. Because I think we need to have more conversations about other potential surplus parcels.
And that could potentially be used to honor Mr. Whitfield in that way.
I could support that. So now the motion does so we would have to have some
If someone wanted to offer an amendment on that.
To amend the motion to remove the condition that it be, that the money be applied to the Affordable Housing Commission and that instead it be applied to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Their budget. Their budget.
So a motion second to amend them, to amend the motion to direct the proceeds from the sale to the Parks and Rec budget. So any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye that, that motion amended. So the motion now reads to surplus the Whitney Triangle Park at fair market value with proceeds from that sale to be credited to the Parks and Rec budget or department. So any further discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. And again, I want to thank everyone, even though it wasn't the way you wanted it to turn out potentially. But I appreciated the feedback from folks about our action. So that then brings us to the second part of this, this would be the Catherine Park.
So Mayor, could I ask for further clarification?
I'm sorry, that's right. Let me go through the bullets. My bad. Little, so a clarification, public benefit purpose? What do we, I mean, do we need action on that?
We don't need action on that. Really, the other additional guidance would be any conditions you'd like to see.
Okay, so there were conversations here about covenants and restrictions. What do we want? I mean, what I heard was that portion of the money could be dedicated to honor Judge Whitfield.
And that I would clarify conditions of the sale. So if there's, for instance, as was proposed in the previous sale, a height limit or a size limit or something like that for the condition of the sale itself.
I'm, I'm going to suggest that we put in some really simple stuff. But one of the things I did like in the previous sale proposal was the idea that the owner is responsible for maintaining the property as it currently is until they're ready to build. And that it not turn into a weed lot. We have a few of those already. We don't need anymore. So I will move that we require that the property be watered and maintained until such time as they are ready to build at the owner's expense. And to that there be a limitation on square footage of the home not to exceed four thousand square feet.
A second.
So we have motion second to for the following restrictions within this purchase and sale agreement. One would be that the premises shall be maintained in existing condition until, until construction begins. And that the home be no larger than four thousand square feet.
So I have a question. I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I'd like clarification. Is for staff, I guess. The parcel is city owned, is it currently zoned PR? And if not, what is going to be the target zoning RL?
It is zoned RL.
It is, even though it's city owned.
Yes.
And maintained as a quote city park, it's RL.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the height limit is thirty-five feet.
Okay. I'm probably going to vote against it because four thousand square feet sounds.
Three thousand sounds better. I'm in my motion.
No, well, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying.
When they get the building class, they may back down.
I think that lot is going to encourage someone to go vertical. And to the extent that the zone limits height, you know, that's the way I'd build on it.
Okay, well, we do have a motion second to move forward with maintaining the property and no more than four thousand square foot home. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, I'm going to vote against it. Okay, then we can move to Catherine Park.
To Catherine Park, yes, thank you. So the second parcel identified was Catherine Park. And I can pull it up on the map. I think I have a couple of images if you'd like. Catherine Park is about a point, like three fourths of an acre parcel off of Vantage Highway to the north would be Radio, Radio Road. And this was dedicated or donated to the city in nineteen eighty by John D'Amio. And so, let's see, one of the conditions on the sale of the property, but it didn't run with the title. So, so is that it's, if the city ever sold the property, it would be for, for residential construction. And also that the desire would be the money would go to a capital expenditure rather than maintenance and operations. And somehow Catherine D'Amio would be honored in the sale of that property. And so, and this is also a parcel that has some difficult access. It does have a twenty foot access across the front, actually the front of KXLE. And again, this is just to the west of KXLE property. And, and the twenty foot is absolutely minimum for fire access. And so there are utilities available both on Radio Road and also on Vantage Highway. And it would be, need some, some easement work in order to get the utilities there. There has been potential discussion about the city's use of the, use of property for affordable housing in your strategic vision. You identified the potential of doing a cottage house. This property or cottage development as a pilot development. And so this property is zoned RL. And so RL zoning actually accepts some single family units and duplexes. And so there's been some, some discussion about potentially looking at this as, as something creative, affordable housing project potentially as well. So, so again, let's see here, I would have the same questions on the, on the parcel. This was again, part of our parks inventory for a number of years. It hasn't been planned or programmed for any active park access. And again, on, on Vantage Highway, it will have a little bit more traffic. And so I'm getting a separate access other than the easement through KXLE probably isn't likely due to the slope of the property upfront. So, so again, the property does have constraints and there's residential units on two sides. And again, KXLE on the other side. So with that, we'd stand for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak to this? I'm going to just approach name, address, whether you're speaking for yourself or others. Your name and address, whether you're speaking for yourself or others.
My name is Fred Pagean. I live at four oh seven South Sprague Street. I would ask that the council please table the discussion about surplus in Catherine Park. The reason is that the Affordable Housing Commission back in two thousand nineteen identified Catherine Park as a property they would like to study as a possible location for affordable housing project. As well, in the last year, the Planning Commission recommended the council that Catherine Park remain zoned public reserve in part because we felt, I'm the member of the Planning Commission, we felt that any changes should be deferred until there was an appropriate discussion about possible other uses, especially with an eye towards evaluating it for how affordable housing. Both the mayor, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Commission, and the Director of Community Development have been aware of the interests of the members of these two commissions and studying this, the viability of this property for some time. I'd like to urge the council to put aside any discussion of surplusing the property until it's been thoroughly reviewed by the Affordable Housing Commission.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, in the chambers wish to address this issue? Anyone attending virtually, if you would like to address, please raise your hand. Sarah Beddsole. And you're unmuted.
Perfect. Good evening, council. Sarah Beddsole, seven zero three South Maple, co-chair of the Affordable Housing Commission. I would just like to echo Fred's comments that I would really love to see this come before the commission to do a little further evaluation of the property and take a look at whether or not it would be a good fit for an affordable housing option.
Great, thanks. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Anyone virtually? See no one that, council?
Mr. Mayor, I was, I guess I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I guess I'll make a motion to table the discussion about surplusing Catherine Park for the next, for six months. And then I'll tell, explain why after, I think for a second.
Can I, is tabling, does that have like implications that in Robert's rules? Yeah, I'm just, what is, what is the implication of tabling versus just?
Putting it off.
Not acting on something.
Well, in essence, it'll have the same effect. If tabling it means that it can't be brought up for that period of time as opposed to putting it off, you, is more indefinite. Council could choose the time limit, but if it's tabled for six months, then it can't be brought up again for six months. It's a definite time.
But it has to be brought up in six months?
It doesn't have to. It means it's, it cannot be brought up for at least six months.
I'm not hearing a second. So I think I'm going to declare that motion dead for lack of a second.
I have a question. So rather than tabling it, I, I think once we take a property and, and look at it as a surplus property, whatever we decide we're going to do with it, we could decide we're just going to evaluate what its use potential is. Then we can send it to affordable housing. Don't it, isn't that the order it goes in? Didn't we?
I think it was flipped the last time. I recall we had conversation about surplusing the community garden site, but we waited until we had a proposal.
Right.
Okay.
And then surplus the property.
But, but we can do it this way. We could say, we're going to declare this surplus, but we don't know what we're going to do with it. And send it to affordable housing and let them evaluate. And give them 90 days or give them 120 days or something like that. Would that, is that a possible way to solve this problem?
For what purpose?
Since they want to look at it, they feel.
No, I mean, why would we surplus it before? Why not just send it to?
Because I think we all know, we don't, we don't want to keep this on inventory, do we?
I would like to see what the commission comes up with in terms of a, a plan.
I don't, well, we get that opportunity, don't we? Yes. I mean, us declaring it surplus does not mean that we've accepted whatever they want to do.
So why don't, why don't we just send it back to the Affordable Housing Commission and say, you're on the clock, figure out if you want this or not. And if you don't want it, then we're going to do something different with it. And that's our direction.
It could be, I would say my, what I was going to say to that point, or more broadly is if, if we were to surplus this, I mean, I'm, I, I think there was consensus at the council that the, the reason behind the surplus, the reason it made the cut was to target potential opportunities for affordable housing. We know that the site has constraints. We know it's developable within limits. What we don't know really is what the market will bear in terms of projects or investment. I will say that I'm okay with both approaches. I think we can work this toward the, the goal. But I would also say that I want, I, unlike the Catherine Park parcel, I'm sorry, the, the triangle, the Whitfield Triangle parcel. I am not interested in selling this property just for, just straight up residential use. I want this parcel to be affordable housing developed, number one. The thing that, and I also, what I don't want, it's easy to say what you don't want and maybe what you want. What I don't want is repeat of the community garden parcel evaluation. The one thing I felt that was severely lacking in that entire process was a, a lack of site development conversation at the council level, not where the boundary line falls or whatever. We basically said, make it affordable. Affordable Housing Commission did their work perfectly fine. It fell right, right within the code. And we end up with three high density, high, you know, four story buildings essentially. And I don't personally think that's the highest and best use of that parcel, but that's the direction we're going to go. We have an opportunity here to do something unique. And absent some direction or vision from the council, that may not happen. You know, I'm, I'm not questioning the ability of the Affordable Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, to weigh in on that. But I think we need to provide some direction. So I'm good with all of it as long as we can keep moving toward a, you know, a vision.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Mayor and Council, that every piece of property that we have, that council has declared surplus has to go through the process where you identify what the disposal method will be for that surplus property. So in other words, the conversations that, that you've had over the years has been, what properties do we want to put on the list to surplus? When the opportunity comes along to sell or develop that property? So I, I guess I would, you know, under our code, we would have to identify those means of disposal at the time it's declared surplus through resolution.
Thank you. Okay, other, so where are we going? I mean, we can, we can just direct it back. I don't know. We don't need a formal motion if there's consensus. Nancy?
I would like to comment that I, I support both of Councilman Miller's suggestions. And I would like to see it go back to the Affordable Housing Commission. And for them to work with the staff. And I, I would really like to see the, the concept of the cottage housing explored by the Affordable Housing Commission as a possible use for that, for that property.
I would agree with that. I do not want to see it built as an apartment house. It's just not the right location for it. It's smack up against residential zone.
Yeah, I think the zone, if it's RL.
I think it's RL.
At this point, you're not going to get.
Yeah, I, and I, and I, my main point was, you know, we don't need to get into the weeds on the details, but I think what lacked, what, whether it's a cottage development or some sort of combination of cottage and townhouse or, you know, something. I, I think it's a, if, if the council feels like this is a, you know, what we know from affordable housing, what the city has to offer is land in part, and some money, but not a lot of money. So I think we only can get one bite at the apple when it comes to these parcels. So that's why I think we really need to have a design concept.
Okay, so I'll move to forward the Catherine Park parcel to the Affordable Housing Commission to explore affordable housing options, including cottage housing, and to report back to the council in six months.
We have motion second to refer the Catherine Park parcel for review and recommendations from the Affordable Housing Commission, including, to include cottage communities within, within six months. Any further discussion? Other than just as the chair, I mean, I think the thing to recognize right now with affordable housing, and it is to David's point, in certain ways, we have an open process for people to apply for, for either land or to build. I'm not sure that we've necessarily marketed that well. You know, like actually actively engaged with their developer community around potential options. So, I mean, I think what I would suggest is we have both the conversation with the Affordable Housing Commission, but also the Affordable Housing Commission have that, that conversation with the community.
I would agree.
With those options.
Especially the cottage housing, that seems like a, it, I feel that the lack in the market right now is all not a lot of maintenance, but individual residences for people who are seniors that don't wish to live in an apartment house or can't, just can't stay in a big house and are no longer in a financial position to buy what's available in the market, which runs somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000.
No, it's good. Okay, so I think.
One other thing, just as a note, when this is referred over to the Affordable Housing Commission, I would ask that we could get staff to provide a site plan that shows the easement locations, the physical boundaries of the whole parcel. This is from 1980 and it, it doesn't really help. So, I mean, it helps, but it doesn't, doesn't quite get us there. So I think we could do better.
The good part is the staff for the Affordable Housing Commission is online.
There you go. They can take it. Take it from here.
So duly noted. We do have motion second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. That then brings us to citizen common and non-agenda issues. This is an opportunity for members of the public to, to provide information and raise concerns over which issues over which council have purview. You will have three minutes. To, three minutes recognize that council will not take action this evening on any issue that's raised. We'll start, and please identify yourself with your name, address, and whether you're representing yourself or others. I have Jason. Oh, I didn't see it back. Okay, if you will.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jason White. I'm the current Chair and President of the Ellensburg School District Board, and my address is 106 East 10th Avenue, Ellensburg. I don't have a pre-scripted message for you all tonight. I was a little bit surprised of the announcement that was added to the agenda kind of last minute. The ESD Superintendent and Board of Directors has and continues to be committed to working with the city to address the pickup and drop off concerns that have been identified. At the same time, we are treating the cease and desist order with the seriousness that it deserves. ESD is also concerned about our children's and our families' safety. As you did not mention, ESD has put in place traffic guards that have been helping with that situation. Honest communication and mutual good faith efforts is the district's intention. We want to find a solution to the city's concerns. But I am concerned and truly regret that the city unilaterally issued a cease and desist notice with the threat of fines and required remedial action to be, to be provided no later than two days after Christmas. We are committed to open problem solving discussions with the city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers wish to approach council over a non-agenda item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat Kelleher, 6530 Wilson Creek Road. I've been tending your meetings bi-weekly since September, addressing a safety concern along Cora Street that continues to this day. Obviously, I'm out of the loop. Nobody's approached me and said that it's not a safety concern. You know, you have the wrong issue. There's obviously something I missed earlier that you spoke to, Mr. Mayor, and, and that the, the President of the School Boards spoke to. But I want to address the developer. Garko, they come into our community, they collect our money. Each of those schools cost $23 million. They did traffic studies, not one, not two, but three on Cora Street. When they didn't want to put a traffic light on 15th, they did a memo. And when they didn't want to do $3 million worth of improvement, they did another memorandum to these traffic reports. Okay? And we have a simple safety issue of their being queuing on Cora, interrupting bus traffic, public conveyance along a public street. There's parking in a no parking zone. The safety concern has been going on for four months now. When, when is, when's it going to be resolved? I mean, you know, don't play with that knife. Go ahead and play with it for four months. You know, somebody's going to get hurt. That's what's going to happen. There's going to be an accident. There's snow coming in, is, just adds another link to that chain that needs to be broken to prevent accidents. Oh, they slipped through this, through the intersection. Because they were queued up, they rear ended the, the, you know, the back of another car, or they hit a bus, or they had to pull out. It's a safety concern that hasn't been addressed. Obviously, I'm out of the loop on some of the internal stuff that's been going on. But nobody yet has, has come to address, say that it's not a safety concern. And Garko builds schools. They know what's required. They know what happens at schools. And they have done nothing to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room on a non-agenda item? Okay, we have two folks in the queue. First is James Revard.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we're good.
Oh, okay. Yeah, hi. James Revard, 113 West 10th Avenue. I just wanted to say that I finished my 10th year on the Environmental Commission. Just wanted to say thanks for the time. I didn't want to renew my term. I figured 10 years was long enough sent term. We've done a lot of good things, you know, in the 10-year span. There's been, we've had the bicycle advisory to Environmental Commission. We've kind of started the, you know, the water quality grant cycle that we've been reviewing applications and making recommendation, recommendations to council to fund different projects. Lots changed in the 10 years. You know, I think Ellensburg was the first city on the east side to implement a plastic bag ban. Many of you probably remember that. It was probably very many back and forth meetings kind of regarding those requirements. And now it's a statewide basically law. So I just want to, again, I wanted to say thank you. I've had a good time serving on the Environmental Commission. I think just a couple of different things I'd probably recommend. You know, our environment, which was kind of a citizens group a few years ago, wanted the city to basically go all solar. And we kind of had a mini kind of commission meeting, I think with energy services and whatnot. And at that time, we just couldn't really recommend the city go that direction. But I, we did ask the city staff to give us some data on solar installations by year because we kind of speculated over time that there would be more solar rooftop installations. And there has been, but there hasn't really been the exponential growth that we were kind of expecting. So that may be something to look into in the future to how to kind of accelerate more solar roof installations. Not the 25 megawatt, you know, solar farm that kind of the, our, our environment was kind of asking the city to go down that path. And then the other thing, I think about three or four years ago, we had a city, someone from the city come and, and talk about public disclosure to our group. And the way that it was approached and the training that was given, I felt very uncomfortable with how it was approached because we were kind of asked to sign a, sign in less, kind of like check in a box, like you were here and you were trained and you understand. And, you know, I've worked in government for 15 plus years and I've had a lot of different public disclosure request training. And my concern that night, I expressed it at, at the meeting, but it was kind of dismissed a little bit. And my concern was, do 60 and 70-year-olds and 18-year-olds really understand the complexity of public disclosure in that training?
James, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap. We're at three minutes.
Okay, yeah. What I am basically fundamentally getting down to is I would like to see and have the city kind of look at, you know, how well that you train people that get onto commissions in public disclosure now that the city's moved to the email system. I, that was my recommendation three or four years ago is not to use.
Okay, that, I'm going to have to cut you off. Thank you. I've got Lee Bates. Still showing muted. Still showing muted.
There I am.
There we go. Lee, you're on.
Hey, thank you. I hope that all in the room this evening in speaking the pledge of allegiance did it with meaning and sincerity. The final phrase with liberty and justice for all means just that. It means all. Gender, skin color, national origin, sexual orientation, religious affiliation, or none at all. Age, handicapping conditions, social status, mental acuity, economic conditions, all other personal attributes should not be considered. The phrase with liberty and justice for all means just that, all. I filed an American with disabilities complaint against the city for an unsafe crossing at Cora and the P to C trail. I received a letter recently saying the city has deemed my complaint satisfied and I, and closed the file. I vehemently disagree. The school district has hired crossing guards during school start and end times five days a week. According to common logic, there are twenty-four hours in a day and there are three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. So when crossing guards are not present, what is the city of Ellensburg done to assure disabled people's safety? The answer is nothing. Flashing caution lights. I've asked for it before on more than one occasion, and I think it's a reasonable request. I won't be satisfied until the city installs two two flashing caution lights on both sides of the Cora Crossing at the P to C trail location. So case closed and concern remedied. No, I think not, not even close. Six of my neighbors, just six that I know of, like me, are physically handicapped. There could be more of them than I'm not aware of in my neighborhood. Are members of the council convinced the city has done what is reasonably necessary to keep all citizens safe? Do all vehicles stop for trail users when waiting to cross? The answer again is no. I and other handicapped citizens have a right to feel safe when crossing the street as any other citizen. It takes me three to four times longer to cross a thirty-foot crosswalk than those without a handicapping condition. Waiting to cross, feeling intimidated by motorists, and then frankly, being flipped off by a parent driving a child to Veronica and even yelled at is not what all other pedestrians experience. I'm not asking the city council to climb Mount Everest. I'm not asking you to swim the English Channel. I'm not asking you to run the Boston Marathon. I'm simply requesting that the city council instruct Ms. Lisa Young, the city attorney, and the city manager by whom work for us and you, their leaders, their boss, to reconsider their decision. It's a reasonable request and it's absolutely doable.
Thank you. That's your three minutes.
Need to know.
Lee, that's your three minutes. Thank you. Is anybody else wish to address counsel? I don't see anybody else in the virtual queue. Anyone else in the room? Thank you. We'll move on. Then we have no business requiring a public hearing this evening. We're in nine A. This is page one fifty-five in your packet. It's the second reading and adoption of ordinance forty-eighty-two, amending the Ellensburg Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kirsten Sackett, Community Development. So before you today, as Mayor Tab just stated, is second reading of the ordinance to adopt the comp plan amendments. You held a public hearing at your last meeting, which was held on December sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And that was to review the eight items that council docketed for comp plan amendments after receiving eleven proposals. I did outline which ones move forward. There's a variety of motions that were taken. But regarding doc item twenty-one oh one, that was to update the six-year capital improvement plans. There was a modification that was requested by council. That was to update the Parks and Rec Capital Improvement Plan. So that was incorporated. That begins on page one sixty-three of your packet. Doc item twenty-one oh two was referred from the previous year, twenty-twenty annual amendment process. And it creates a new chapter nine of your plan. It's found on page two thirty-three. It's the new diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. That one was approved as presented at the meeting. Doc item twenty-one oh three provides an update to the housing chapter to conform with the House Bill requirements relating to supporting emergency shelters and housing through local planning and development regulations. That was also approved as presented, and that begins on page one seventy-five. A doc at twenty-one oh four was referred into the twenty-twenty-two cycle, and that's to update the housing chapter with additional data that we gathered in our housing needs assessment. Doc item twenty-one oh five updates two chapters of the comprehensive plan. This one was approved as presented. It was afforded by the I T department to add some new language regarding the broadband policies in the city. So updated chapter five, which is the capital facilities and utilities chapter, that begins on page one ninety-one in your packet. It also updated the goals section within chapter six of the comprehensive plan. That's your economic development chapter. That begins on page two thirteen, and those goals call for broadband expansion to all residents and businesses within the city, and it also includes language that was added to reflect the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Doc at twenty-one oh six was a proposal to further update the narrative portion of the economic development chapter presented by Centrefuse. After discussion at the meeting, council referred that item into the twenty-twenty-two annual amendment cycle in order to provide for inclusion of the findings of the tip strategy. It's currently being developed for the community. Doc at item twenty-one ten was an amendment to the future land use designation for what's referred to as parcel seven-one-six-one through through. And the proposal was modified by council from what was presented to the planning commission. And the proposals to re-designate the southern portion of the property to general services and general commercial and services. And finally, twenty-one eleven is an amendment to the future land designation for a different parcel at the southern end of the town. It's located within the U G A, the urban growth area at the southern perimeter of the city limits, and it would re-designate a large portion of the property to light industrial. And that was approved in accordance with the planning commission recommendations. Both those map amendments are found on page one seventy-four. And I'm going to share a screen real quickly, a much quicker version than the last week. But those changes are reflected in a new map there. And then just moving on to the entirety of what's in your packets, exhibit A to the ordinance is the capital improvement plans. And exhibit B is everything else that's going to be changing within the plan, and it's in like basically chronological order. So going back up here, this is just exhibit B. And then this wasn't something we needed to reflect when we were looking at this previously, but this table of contents page, we're adding the new chapter nine in here, diversity, equity, inclusion. In here, there's three new figures in the D E I chapter that are captured in figures twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, and that just changes some page numbers. And then finally, we have the future land use map. And then it moves into each of the chapters that was changed with any of the additions shown as underlined. Anything deleted is a strikeout. And so you've got chapters two for housing. You got the capital facilities and utilities, the economic development chapter, and then the D E I chapter. So at the conclusion of last meeting's public hearing, council did approve a motion to give ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two first reading. And for today, staff is just proposing you conduct a second reading and would recommend approval.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak to this? I've lost everybody, nearly everybody virtually. Anybody in the room? Counsel?
Mayor, move second reading and adoption of ordinance four-eight-eight-three.
Two.
Two. Two, second, my bad.
My motion, second to adopt, uh, conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance forty-eighty-two, amending the comprehensive plan. So further discussion, the clerk would call the roll.
Elliot.
Yes.
Goodlow.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Lilquess.
Yes.
Miller.
I.
Morgan.
Yes.
Tab.
I, that motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance set the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington, amending the comprehensive plan adopted by ordinance four-seven-eight-five and set out in chapter fifteen point one-two-zero of the Ellensburg City Code.
Thank you. We're now at nine B. This is a proposed ordinance to amend the city code provisions related to city commissions, boards, and committees. I'm two forty-two. Hearing examiner boards and commissions. He's done, we're doing a staff report. I would note that as we hit page two forty-two, for those of us counting the four hundred-page packet, we are better than halfway through.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, as you mentioned, this is, the staff report includes a recommendation on two separate ordinances. And by way of a little bit of background, as you recall, there was a subcommittee of council that was formed earlier this year to address concerns about consistency and the processes for appointment, for application appointment to our city boards and commissions. They presented their report to council at the July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. And based on that, a direction was given to staff to go ahead and develop an ordinance to address those issues that were raised by the subcommittee. That draft ordinance was reviewed with council on November first. And in large part, there was agreement with the direction of the changes proposed for the ordinance with a couple of exceptions. So I'm not really going to review what was already presented to you as part of the draft ordinance back in November, but I do want to highlight a couple of changes that were brought up. And one of those was for section one point one-two-point-one-hundred, which is on page two forty-nine in your packet. And that was the suggestion to allow the city committees and boards to create their own subcommittees. So that has been added into subsection E of that particular section. In addition, there was a request to add to the residency qualifications that appears in section one point one-two-one-four-zero, which is also at page two forty-nine of your packet, an exception to the residency requirements for anyone who has been called away for military service or performing military service. That has also been added. And then the last change that was added was an oversight in the original draft, which was the unintentional exclusion of the lodging tax advisory commission. They have been added in with some changes. And that's at page two sixty-six of the, of the, of your packet. Page twenty-one of the ordinance. In addition, we're through this ordinance, if it is moved forward for reading and ultimately adoption, it will repeal a couple of chapters that relate to commissions or boards that are no longer active, including the Economic Development Corporation. That's chapter one point four-six at page two fifty-four. The Business Incubator Executive Commission, that's at page two fifty-six of the agenda packet. And then the Building Code Board of Appeals, which is at page two sixty-seven of the packet. The elimination of the Building Code Board of Appeals had a had a kind of a ripple effect in that we still need to allow for appeals of building code issues. So the way to address that was to amend our chapter on hearing examiners, which is chapter one point seven zero A. And so at the time that we went ahead and made those changes to include building code violation appeals, we also made some other technical changes to that ordinance as well. And that ordinance follows the ordinance on boards and commissions. That is a very brief summary of a lot of changes that we reviewed, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Before we do have questions or a motion, is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak to this? Anybody, anybody virtually? James? Revard?
Yep. Oh, yeah, you can hear me.
Yep, we're good.
Yeah, I think your guys' review of boards and commissions is all great work. That's my general comment. I think I can come back in the future. We could talk about public disclosure. I think it is important for the city to make sure that volunteers are trained well, and it's a tricky subject. Years ago, we were told to use public, our personal email addresses, and that I was not okay with that. I recommended the city move to the system they're moving now. I even kind of questioned whether maybe boards and commissions need email addresses, you know, why use email at all? Because it just leads to potential liability with public disclosure issues. So that's all I kind of wanted to say is make sure that people are trained well.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Counsel?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider first readings of the ordinance amending various chapters of the city code related to commissions, boards, and committees. This has to be done as two motions, doesn't it?
Yes.
Four-eight-eight-three.
Rich, what number would that be?
Four-eight-eight-three.
Second.
What? Motion and second, to conduct first reading of boards and commissions ordinance forty-eight eighty-three. Is there any further discussion?
I have two proposed amendments. On page two sixty-four, section one point eight-eight-point-oh-two-oh, the staggers, the appointments of the D E I commission, and that is no longer needed since those are appointed and they're already staggered. So I suggest we delete that section.
The initial formation of.
The initial formation, since it's already formed, you don't, we don't need that.
So are you making that motion?
So is it straight?
Yes, I would propose. Yes, I would move to amend the proposed ordinance to.
Counsel, mayor, could you refer to what section?
So it's one-eight-eight-point-zero-two-zero-B. Page two sixty-four in our packet, page nineteen of twenty-six in the ordinance.
Is it? So is a portion of that is still relevant, right?
So we got, we got a B?
Just B.
Yeah.
Well, the second, I guess David's point is the second portion of that.
Second part of the second sentence is still relevant, and there's no replacement language somewhere else, right?
Okay.
Although maybe the first one does cover it.
Right.
It seems like, yeah, it is redundant with a but the part about the.
Should I revise to ask the city attorney to look at that?
Yeah, I think, trying to think back, but I did consider that because it was a new commission that was formed with those staggered terms that I didn't. My thought was that I didn't want to change it that it would naturally come to an end after the end of this, with those staggered terms, and then revert back to the to the general language in the, in section one point one-two, or chapter one point one-two.
So the language doesn't create a problem. It's just, it just memorializes what we did.
Yeah, and probably what I'll need to do at some point is when those staggered terms have all been appointed, is to come back and delete that language.
I thought we appointed staggering them. They're already staggered.
But there's other wording in here. I'm seeing what he's talking about. I I voted, I, I seconded your motion, but I think maybe it's unnecessary.
Okay, I'll just withdraw.
I, I will take a look at that.
Draw my second.
Well, if I, if I may, I mean, this is, this is a first reading. So
Exactly.
The issue's being raised. We can certainly look into it and come back with the mandatory language of the second.
Um, and for my second issue, um, I asked, I asked Lori for a list she had prepared in May. A list of all of the commission members and when they were first appointed, and I kind of did a quick analysis of it, and it's, what are we trying to accomplish with the term limits? And I can't find any compelling reason to limit terms. The, as I looked at the list, there were two commissions that did not have new voices. Anyone, which I defined as anyone who had been appointed within the last two years, would be a new voice. And the only two that did not have new voices was the civil service and the buildings appeals, and building appeals is going to be next. So that leaves civil service, which we don't appoint anyway. So we are getting new voices. we are getting new voices. So if that's the objective of the term limits, we, it, it's solving a problem that we don't have. And there are seven commissions with zero historic voices or experienced voices that, which I defined as greater than two terms. So lot, seven commissions that, that don't have any, um, anyone serving on them currently that have served more than two terms. And so I guess there's plenty of turnover to provide new ideas. The, the council, when we appoint, and if we do a good job recruiting before these terms end, we'll have a pool that, that we can choose from. And we don't have to, um, kick an experienced historic voice off. People who are willing to serve. If we don't need to, and I mean, if, if we want to, we can at every, every time. I mean, we don't even have to have someone replace them. We can just say, no, we're not going to appoint you and renew your, your position. So, and I guess what term limits do is say, we value, um, new voices more than we value those with a historical perspective and, um, and experience and having served more than two terms. Maybe I am biased in this, but I think that that's important to have on the commissions. So.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I mean, part of the ad hoc committee. The reasoning behind that was that we have commissions which have people who have been there a long time. And are good at getting people they know apply for positions and thus have control over those commissions. And I don't consider that to be a healthy way for a commission to operate. I also have believed for a long time that especially on boards and commissions, there's a need for change. It, you get entrenched in old ideas, and I've seen this, and I see it here in the city. I see. I don't want to call out specific commissions, but, but I can tell you that I've sat in on almost every one of them, and I've seen the same thing in at least four of them, which is people are there a long time and they get very kind of stuck in how they think. And I, I'm not sure that's healthy. And I, and I think from boards and commissions in particular, we want ideas. We want fresh thinking and I'm afraid when you get an unhealthy situation where someone has developed a lot of power because got all that historic knowledge, it can also be a hammer they use in a way that's not healthy. That's my opposition statement.
Just, just for references, we're going through this. If you're looking at it, we're on page, I think, two forty-eight in our packet. It's one point one, two, zero, eight, zero, limited terms, right? Any other comment?
I was the other person on the ad hoc committee. There was a lot of discussion around term limits for the boards and commissions, and I'm, I'm sorry, this is for staff. Just we, last we discussed this, we decided to make a carve-out or some flexibility. If we can't fill it, then somebody, somebody can maintain that seat. I think that there we're making administrative changes like posting when people's terms are up, so people can basically compete for those spots, but it's very hard for them to it, it would it is less, it, it feels like less of an opportunity, um, for people to go up against the historic knowledge that's been there for decades. Um, and I don't think that it's, um, I mean, I wasn't thinking that, I, I don't feel like I has, I value the new voices more than the historic, but I, I definitely think I, I value a balance of that, and I think term limits would give us that. I don't, I don't feel so strongly about it, like I but I I don't know, it's not like a council seat. It's not a campaign, a campaign that you, you go through in a, a fight people are willing to give for this unpaid level of service, and, and usually boards and commissions are a gateway into local government, and this provides an opportunity for new people to get in. So that is why I support the term limits for boards and commissions.
The question for Councilmember Lucas. It sounds like, if I'm, if I understood you correctly, we don't have too much of a problem with long time people.
Oh, there are seven boards and commissions that have zero members who have served more than two terms.
So, so my tenure is this tenure on the council sort of bridges, you know, the recognition and the formation of this committee. And I was a little bit surprised when I came on the council to find, I'm probably going to get a red card if I don't get close to my microphone. So, um, I, I, I see, we, we can get to where we want to go, whether we go right or we go left on this. And, you know, the council can solicit and, you know, intentionally sort of, uh, you know, try to you know, rotate people on the commissions sort of arbitrarily, but I, I'm also aware that during my first tenure on council, we basically reappointed everybody who asked every single time. And there was, there was almost no discussion. It was, it was a blanket statement. We do thirteen, fourteen people at a time, so we weren't giving it a lot of thought. So if we go that route, we actually need to do it. And I think you can get to the same place that you're getting with the term limits. The downside of the term limits, and again, i- if we work hard, you know, under these proposed rules, we can still maintain historical knowledge. We can still make the decision. There isn't somebody who is good, and there's just going to be a brief interlude, and we're going to reappoint the person. It doesn't prevent you from doing it. It just causes you to pause and think. And so, um, and granted that time period sixty days or whatever it is in, in there. But nothing prevents us from saying, you know what, there isn't a better, there isn't the right person out there in the public, or in some cases, we're having trouble filling positions occasionally, not like most local government, but we still have positions go unfilled for an extended period of time sometimes. So there's an opportunity to bring those people back in. And so we can get to the same place going both directions. I really don't care. It feels, it felt funny for me to sort of be going down the road of, you know, sort of term limits when we're not limited ourselves, you know, on the commissions and boards that we serve on as council members and as council members. And so that's an interesting sort of hypocritical position to be taking if we're going to impose term limits, which I don't agree with. So I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this either way, but we have to work at it to get to the same place.
So I can just, the difference between when you were on before and now is we have liaisons, council liaisons sitting in on those meetings and, and observing and can report back if there are toxic and unhealthy relationships going on and
Nancy, that becomes extremely awkward and you know that. Don't be silly. I'm sorry, I'm going off. I'm done, but I'm going to say that it is really awkward. You're not a business person in this community. It's really hard to speak up in a public meeting and say, we have issues with this board because we have people sitting on this board who are controlling this entire board.
And that's why you do it privately with the mayor before, before the meeting?
If you can reach the man.
Perhaps the way we can address this, I kind of combining, uh, some of the comments, administrative comments that Councilmember Lamb made and remarks from Councilmember Elliott, perhaps. I don't think when we do we currently, when we know we're going to have a vacancy on a commission that, that's, it's the position is filled right now, do we currently advertise that vacancy in the paper? Okay, so then if we do get a couple of people, two people, say the person who is already on the commission and they want to reapply, why can't we have a process that requires them to come to council and speak to their reapplication? Just like we had the person who is new, speak to why they want to be on the commission.
That's not been how it's been done.
Yeah, I know. But we could do that and perhaps reach, uh, reach the goals we have without imposing term limits. So it's sooner or later, those term limits are going to catch somebody who's really contributed and is a valuable member, and they all of a sudden have to quit coming. Uh, so that's a downside of that.
I think to Rich's point, if I may, um, Nancy, I think that's a good point. Uh, we have been advertising. Um, you know, at our last meeting, I think we signed a bunch of reapp appointments. There had not been if there had been others interested who had made application, we would have had a process. Uh, we didn't. So I think to Rich's point, if we're, if that's the direction we're going, we need to recognize that there's an investment in, in getting that information out and encouraging people, um, because I think to Mary's point, at times people look at entrenched commission members and say, what's the point? Why would I apply for that? Because blah, 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 you know? So I mean, I think that it's work, and it's work that we would have to recognize needs to get accomplished if, if we're going to change the culture, because in a way, that's what you're attempting to do is to change the culture of how we have operated. So where are we? I mean, I'm beginning to feel like if
Two, two questions, actually, two things. One is I would agree. I think we can deal with this through some, some policies, I guess. But I, I think, for example, you know, as a, as a matter of practice, if we required anyone who was interested in reappointment to appear before the council, that would be, that would go to that, number one. And then secondly, um, as presented, there's no carve-out language that would allow an exception if there's no, if there's a, I'm, I'm, that's a question. What, could you direct me to the section that calls?
Yeah, it's, it's in subsection, uh, D.
That's the sixty day window.
Yes.
Say again on the section?
It's on page, uh, two forty-eight of the packet. It's in section one point one, two point zero, eight, zero, sub D.
Well, that's the reappointment. Okay, yeah, I was thinking the carve-out being that you go, you go through the process and there's no public interest in serving, and you're going to boot somebody off the commission. Do they have to wait sixty days?
You have sixty, which create, can create horror issues.
Yeah, sure.
So
So I'm gonna make a motion to amend the ordinance to, uh, strike section E, uh, one point one point, one, two, point, oh, zero, eight, zero.
That's good, limited terms.
Limited terms.
So the entire section, oh, eight, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have motion in second to
You have a second?
I think we did. Did we get a second?
To the amendments?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Yeah, so we have motion in second. Thank you, uh, to strike one point one, two, zeros, eight, zero, limited terms in its entirety. Further discussion?
I'll, I'll oppose just for reasons previously stated.
Any other, I mean, we've had quite a bit. Okay, so we do have motion in second to strike one point one, two, point zero, eight, zero uh, from the ordinance. All those in favor?
I.
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 I to vote I, opposed?
I, I.
The motion carries. Okay, so we
You have the amended ordinance to
So, right, so do we have, we have a motion in second? Is, are there further amendments? So we have motion in second to conduct first reading of the, of amended ordinance forty-eight eighty-three. Further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I to vote I, opposed?
I'm so confused, but yes, I, I'm, yeah.
Okay, so motion carries. Um, so noted. Just we're tracking, I think we had, um,
There's still the, the second ordinance on the hearing examiner chat.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just trying to make sure that we note there was opposition to the first reading of the
I think I've got those.
So we need a reading.
Okay, so reading.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington relating to boards and commissions, repealing chapter one point one, two entitled Advisory Commission's Appointment and Adopting a new chapter one point one, two entitled Commissions, Boards and Committees, and repealing chapters in their entirety, amending and repealing sections of the city code as stated.
Thank you.
Want to move on to, I want to just add a comment to what, something that Nancy said. There is nothing that once somebody is off the border commission that prevents them from going to meetings and from even being able to give input. So to say to this, if historical knowledge is gone, is a fiction. But, end of discussion.
We now are moving on to first reading of, uh, ordinance revising chapter one point seven, zero, A, the E O C, of the E C C hearing examiner.
Mr. Mayor, I move first reading of ordinance four eight, eight, four. Second.
Your motion, second to conduct first reading of ordinance four eight, eight, four, uh, related to hearing examiner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I. I to vote I, that motion carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington relating to hearing examiners and adding new sections one point seven, zero, A, point three, two, zero, and one point seven, zero, A, three, four, zero, and amending sections one point seven, zero, A, two hundred, four point three, four point zero, two, zero, and nine point one hundred point one, four, zero of the Ellensburg City Code.
Thank you. That then moves us to nine C. This is a resolution to adopt amended city councils rules of procedure. We're on page two seventy-six in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Terry Weiner, City Attorney, again. The, uh, the, the changes that were, uh, just, uh, part of the ordinance you passed for boards and commissions was part of that study back, uh, earlier this year, which also recommended that there be some changes to the, uh, council rules uh, for consistency. Um, chapter ten, uh, governs the, uh, appointment, excuse me, not the appointment, but the operations uh, and the procedures for boards and commissions. Uh, when I looked at that, um, we also determined that it would be good to update the council rules, uh, a lot of housekeeping issues um, that were noted in the past couple of years along with a couple of substantive changes. Uh, again, you reviewed those proposed council rule amendments, uh, at your November first meeting. Um, and I believe, uh, on the whole that they were, uh, there was general consensus to move forward with that. Um, there was a change requested to, uh, include a statement about, um, council's commitment to having diverse membership on boards and commissions. Uh, that has been added to section ten point three. Uh, that's at page three twenty-seven of your packet. Uh, that's the only change from the draft council rules that you reviewed on November first. Uh, otherwise, they are identical. I've provided both a, uh, clean version, uh, and also a legislative version that shows the changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions about those proposed changes.
Great, thank you, counsel.
I, I would like to propose on page two eighty-two or uh, there's, there's two ordinances, so it's in two places, but section one point two, that, um, it talks about minutes to be public, and it talks about the council minute book shall be open to the public for inspection. And, and I, I would suggest that some reference to keeping the minutes on the city's website be made included in that. Or somehow saying physically at city hall and electronically on the website.
Actually, so we would need, yeah, we, we would need to
I'll second.
See, wait a minute, hold on, if we know, did we get a, we didn't get a motion for the resolution yet. So
Mayor, I move to resolution thirty, two thousand twenty-one, thirty-nine.
So a motion in second to adopt resolution to, uh, to twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, city council rules of procedure. Are there any amendments?
Yeah, so, uh, motion to amend section one point two to include reference to. Uh, minutes available on the city's website.
David, I'll second that. Did you wanna add also at city hall or physically in addition?
Well, it already says, well.
So is the council minute book available at city hall? So that exists.
Okay, that, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
The motion second to amend, uh, section one point two meetings to be public. To include, um, that council minutes shall be open, shall be open to public. The council minute book shall be open to public inspection and available on the city's website. Further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I two vote I, that motion carries.
Uh, and.
Discussion.
One more, just, um.
Where else are we gonna go?
I would propose that, um, that we use gender neutral pronouns instead of the awkward his, her, she, he. Slash technique. And that's in a number of different places. So if, uh, I guess, so I move.
Well, actually, that could be considered a scribbler.
The description.
Could that be a scribbler?
It could be. I'd need some direction. Are you talking about, um, they, there, or some other gender neutral pronouns? Cause there's many of them.
Oh, I see, his, her, like.
I think they, there is what's grammatically acceptable now as a singular pronoun.
But I don't want slashy thing.
Right, it could just be they, it could just be they, or there, or then, instead of the he or she.
So.
Although I know in college, they were really upset when you said they for singular. It is now acceptable.
And for those of us of a certain generation, that's tough.
And don't double space after your periods.
Right.
I know that.
It's true.
Are we gonna talk about the Oxford comma two?
Okay, so we do, did, did we get a second on that?
I do not have a second.
What do we need?
What is the path we need if we choose to accept that?
Well, um, I mean, if you wanna consider a scribbler's error, that's fine. I'm, I'm gonna have to go through and. I'm not sure that a singular reference works in every point in the, in the rules. I'm just gonna have to go through it.
You can handle the gender neutral part.
So then I guess we do, then we should.
But I don't know that I can do it without reference as a singular reference.
It may not, I just don't know without going through it. I think, I don't have a problem with the slash. I mean, as long as it's neutral.
The city manager had a good.
If the he, she is commonly accepted as they, I, I don't understand why, uh, we couldn't. It, that couldn't happen. What, what kind of situation are you thinking that you'd have to say?
Where it might be a possessive term, for instance.
It'd be there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is it would have to be a reference to one or the other. But I guess the suggestion would be, uh, to suggest a motion that. Uh, adopts the, w- with, if you wanna have the gender neutral terminology. That adopts the rules in substantially similar form, and then I will address that. Okay, it'll be signed, it'll be effective at a later date, cause we'll take a little bit to go through it. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I don't know what we just said, but.
I'll, I'll move, uh. Uh, I'll move to request the city attorney go through the ordinance and, uh, attempt to make. The pronouns gender, gender neutral. Second.
Attempt is. Oops, I tried. I mean, you can't, it's either.
I think direct the city attorney would be more appropriate.
To incorporate gender neutral pronouns.
Okay.
As appropriate in, in the resolution, that, or whatever. Well, you did say, so we do have a motion in second. To direct the city attorney to, um, whatever I said. Uh, gender neutral pronouns. In the resolution, so we were in the council rules, I don't even know.
It's a resolution.
Okay, so we're, um, so that's the, that's the motion. We have a second is a further discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the amendment?
I.
I.
I two vote I, that motion carries. Now, we still have, um, an amended resolution, uh. Twenty twenty-one, thirty-nine, um, relating to council rules, um, during further discussion on the amended motion. Seeing done, um, all those in favor?
I.
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 I two vote I, that motion carries, um.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution two thousand twenty-one, forty with the same gender neutral.
A second. So, uh, there's a motion in second to approve council rules and procedures twenty, twenty, twenty-one, forty.
It's the same, they, they were just, one was a legislative version, one was a clean version.
But it's listed as two resolutions.
No, it's just.
Okay, we're done, we're good.
Yeah.
What ordinance number was it? That was a test.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
My last meeting.
No, it's almost like if you look at Rich's body, Rich is, like, we're almost like the monkeys now, like Tristan's here, which is like here. Sorry.
Mary's crying.
We're moving on. Okay. Ninety, I'm sorry, Nancy G, I don't know where to put you. Um, this is a resolution to extend temporary streeters with three thirty-two.
So I move resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty.
Did you want to step? We're rolling, okay. Oh, Lord have mercy, um, to, for twenty twenty-one, forty, uh, resolution to extend streeters. Is there a further discussion to July six?
Question, what happened to our committee?
We just, uh, actually, the conversation that my city manager and I've had is, uh, after the first of the year, now that we have folks that wanna work on it. We'll go back to the downtown association and ask them to bring people together too.
Okay.
Who seconded that motion?
Anybody wanna raise their hand? Rich did, Rich did. Nancy made it, Rich did it. Okay, we're now down to the allocation of lodging tax. Oh, sorry, we have motion in second for resolution to extend streeters, um, all those in favor?
I.
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 I two. Do we need to walk around for like?
Before the study session.
This is not working. Okay, did we pass that one, Beth?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go to nine E. This is the, uh, resolution for allocation of lodging tax funds. We're on page three thirty-six.
If Laurie Giggs had to present. So the city is party to an interlocal agreement, um, to. For the consolidated lodge and tax process, present to the agreement, participating entities contribute thirteen percent of their. Lodging tax collections. For twenty twenty-two, the city's designated amount is forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, the consolidated group decided on the allocations and the cities will go to the. Kit at Test, uh, Kit at Test Valley Event Center, uh, Jazz in the Valley and Gallery One. Our, our lodging tax committee met on December eighth. And they're recommending this distribution and recommend that the council adopt the attached resolution.
Great, thank you, counsel.
I move adoption of resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one dash forty-one for the allocation of twenty twenty-two lodging tax funds.
I guess forty, isn't it forty-two now?
Forty-one, that's correct.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion.
You got that right.
Yeah.
Nancy did it, that's, um, we have a motion second to, um, approve resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, um. Proving allocation of twenty twenty-two lodging tax funds in the amounts forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents as outlined in our packet on page three thirty-six. Is there any further discussion? Only that I would note that nobody's messing with Lori on this. Uh, do we, um.
I'm backing her up.
All, all those in favor? I two vote I, that motion carries, thank you. Um, and let's just see if Jamie's still even out there. There he is. Um, so this is a resolution notifying the public of the intent to designate the C C and C C two zoning district. As residential targeted areas for purpose of expanding the multifamily property tax exemption program and setting a required public hearings, page three, four.
All right, thank you, mayor, members of council, Jamie Ailing with Community Development Department. And as you stated, this is a resolution to set that public hearing, uh, R C W eighty-four, fourteen, zero, four, zero. Identifies the process we must go through in order to expand our multifamily tax exemption program. And this would be the first step. So in order to do so, we must notify the public of our intent to designate a residential targeted area. By resolution and set a public hearing to consider the expansion of the R T A. Uh, the proposal that I put together, the proposed hearing date, and I incorporated in this resolution would be set for January third. Twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock, which would be your next regular scheduled meeting. Uh, R C W eighty-four, fourteen, oh, four, oh, states that the residential target area must be within an urban center. And the area must lack available desirable housing to meet the needs of the public that would desire to live there if that housing was available. Staff would concur that the requirements of the R C W are met and that staff would look forward to presenting proposed amendments to the existing M F T E ordinance. At the public hearing at your next meeting if council approves this resolution before you tonight.
Great, thank you, counsel.
Um, I do have a question. Did the planning commission discuss, um. Uh, near college campuses, so the, uh, on page three forty-one, the bottom of the first paragraph. It, it says that part of the purpose was to stimulate housing opportunities near college campuses. To promote dense transit oriented, walkable college communities. And R C C and C C two zones are more, for the most part, are very close to, um. The college campuses and. So I'm just wondering if, if that could be considered, or did they, did the planning commission consider?
I would say that the affordable, sorry, don't mean to jump.
Affordable housing.
Affordable Housing Commission did, uh, take the R C W into consideration. There are several arguments. On multiple sides saying. It's the authority having jurisdiction that can declare what that residential or that, uh, urban center is. Whether it is adjacent to a college campus or not, um, there are several cities in the state that don't have a college campus. And do have the M F T program, so it's not a, a requirement. They did consider and look at the language of the R C W. And they had, uh, a lot of discussion as to which zones, if we should even follow a zoning district, if we should lay out. But the zoning districts were the easiest to follow and the easiest to, uh, put into practice. Those are also areas that we've had, uh, developer requests come in to, uh. Potentially utilize this program, but we just weren't able to because it wasn't within one of the qualifying districts. So. In long answer, yes, they did consider that, um, but felt that the, the first logical step would be to. Expand from C C to C C two, um, and take care of those active requests that have been coming in for utilizing the program.
Okay, so it has to apply to an entire zone, so if you said our, our H or our M, it. It doesn't, it could be like an overlay, uh.
It, it, it is an overlay, it doesn't necessarily reflect a zone, but. Our zones are already clearly defined and identified and easy to follow, so therefore that's the path that was recommended to follow. From Affordable Housing Commission was to make the consideration to go to, it's already in the C C, that's our current. Defined residential targeted area, so the, the, the thought would be to expand it. The next, uh, step would be to expand it to the C C two.
Okay, to me, the most logical place to put multifamily is nearest the university, though, so it.
Well, I think it's availability. Or two. I, I, I mean, I think, if I may, I mean, Jamie, uh, cause we, part of the conversation, I think there was a simplicity. In just saying C C and C C two, um, uh, to reinforce, uh, Jamie's. Statement, uh, there have been inquiries that in that zone where we have not been able to take advantage of the M F T E. And as a result, development had not moved forward. Um, and I think we can always revisit.
If, you know, you know. If we could put that on the table for future discussion, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, so any other, any other comment, discussion?
Mayor, we've resolution twenty twenty-one, forty-two.
Second.
We have motion second, uh, to approve resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one, forty-two. Uh, notice, notice intent to expand the M F T E zone to C C two and set the public hearing, I believe. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I two vote I, that motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Jamie. That actually moves us to, we don't have any unfinished business. To eleven A, this is the interlocal, uh, between city of Ellensburg.
Unfinished business?
Huh? Yeah, well, there is that.
Fifty or twenty years in county?
Interlocal between city of Ellensburg, Kinnis Pass County for annexation development within the urban growth area, page three forty-five in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Terry Warner, city attorney again. Uh, as council member Morgan noted, this has been, um, a, a long process. Bringing the interlocal to council for approval tonight. Um, it began, um, from my records back in the, I believe in the late. Um, two thousands, um, it's been picked up and, and, you know, moved forward several times. Uh, but really there was a concerted effort this year to, to really, um, put the effort into, um, to getting it over the goal line, so to speak. Um, the city and county met several, the staff for city county, including, um, uh, an elected from each side. Met several times this year to iron out the details, um, and then, uh, that culminated in a proposed. Uh, draft agreement that both the negotiating team, so to speak, agreed to, uh, that was brought to city council. Um, at the joint study session on December ninth, um, there were a couple of, um, discussions about changes and one, one. Um, change, there was only one change that was actually recommended or asked for staff to move forward, and that had to do with, um, the city's attendance at. Um, pre-application meetings, which has been added to, um, to the, uh, interlocal agreement you have before you tonight. As stated in the staff report, the interlocal achieved several goals, uh, to allow for orderly development. In the urban growth area, including the adoption by the county, uh, of, uh, several, uh, city codes and standards, the public works development standards. And some of our, um, zoning and, uh, other land use related codes. Um, part of this process will be better coordination, uh, between the two entities for, uh, development applications. Uh, within the urban growth area, um, the parties are also, um, to meet and, uh, confer on several other aspects. The county will be adopting as part of this, um, a traffic impact fee based on the city's methodology. They'll, uh, meet and discuss that methodology as well. Um, the city will be providing annual updates on that, uh, traffic impact fee. After its, uh, collection has begun and how it's been used, just like they do, uh, for you as, uh, as a, uh, reviewing body annually. Um, and, uh, for areas that are annexed into the city. There's an urban growth, uh, area that are annexed into the city, after the effective date, there is a, uh, revenue sharing formula that's included in, in this. Um, uh, interlocal to, uh, it has certain triggers in terms of the amounts that would be required for sales tax. Collection before revenue sharing would occur, um, and, um, also as part of this, the city, um. Um, will include entire right to waive that, uh, border of the county when we are annexing, um, sections of the U J back. Or into the city, I should say. This is, like I said, the culmination of a lot of work, um, and, um, the county will be, uh, considering this, I believe, next month for adoption. Uh, it's not on their, uh, hearing schedule yet, but, um, I'm told it, it will be. Uh, so with that, um, staff recommends. That you authorize the city man. Uh, so with that, um, staff recommends that you authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement. And I'm available for any questions to ask as the city manager, and we also have public staff here.
Great, thank you, Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign the interlocal agreement to Kinnis Pass County.
Second.
Motion second to authorize city manager to execute the interlocal agreement um as presented in our packet. Is there any further discussion? Um, does anybody from the audience wish to comment? Got nobody left virtually. Um.
I just thank both city and county staff for working out all the details. I know that was not an easy process.
This is a great. This is great. Appreciate the study session that was set up for discussion on this so that we could move it forward and all the hard work that has been done over the last six or seven months or so. Get it to this point.
Thanks. We do have motion second for uh resolution twenty twenty-one forty, no, we don't. Oh, we're just, I'm so sorry. I was looking at, never mind. I know. We have a motion second to authorize city manager to execute the interlocal. Um, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I two vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. And again, to reemphasize, thank you to staff. We are now at a manager's report.
Excellent. I have, just have a few items to report to you. Um, just one is the first, purchase of natural gas required by our code um to notify council. Second, um is a wastewater treatment plant outstanding performance award. Um, the Department of Ecology issues these awards. They were a little bit behind and we received in the mail a plaque for a twenty twenty outstanding performance award, and it's really about safety of our water systems and our treatment process. And so, well done um to our wastewater treatment team and um our public works and utility staff. Um, also, Kinnis Pass County Development Disabilities Advisory Committee um notified us that Councilmember Lilquist's position um will expire at the end of twenty twenty-one, and they've asked for uh either a reappointment or recommendation from council. So we'd ask for to help make that recommendation. Um. We don't, we don't, we don't sort ourselves out until.
So, so we, which is what we've done in the past. I I don't think we've responded to their request until we've gone through our board and commission and liaison appointment um designations.
At the first or second week, a meeting in January?
Probably, yeah, it's probably the second because we'll appoint.
So that will be sufficient. I will let that go.
Okay.
Super. And then one other, actually two other items. Um, the one is that um coming before you at your January third meeting, it will be a resolution to suspend um some of our practices for utility collections. Um, as you all know, um, through the utility moratorium and uh we actually began accruing um some uh a fair amount of um of unpaid receivables and um we had, I believe, over sixteen hundred accounts that are past due according to our code. After we um we followed our process, we would have to start shutting off accounts and in order to help um really bridge that practice, um we'd like to suspend some of our code and recommend another pathway. So that will come back to you with some additional information. Um, the utility advisory committee has already um talked through this and and questioned some of that, and I just want to um give you a a warning again that um this is coming before you, Sam. So um, and then finally, um, this is the last um last meeting of the year, and uh I recognize that there was a um significant amount of work um that has come to culmination tonight. And I think about all of the staff hours and all of the council hours um that has have been put into just this packet. Um, just want to thank you for your service and just recognize um we spent a little time doing a little staff appreciation last week. We have an amazing team that works very hard um to really make sure this community is has safe. And um and it also really can um contribute to the quality of life in our community. So we provide essential services and we have teams that do that proudly. So just want to thank our staff um for their service this year. It's been a tough year. It's been a tough couple of years. Um, but we have a great team. So um thank you very much also for the opportunity to serve you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So let's do council reports. Mary, do you want to start or should we end with you?
Um. The only thing I thought is um it Tom, missed the lodging tax meeting. It's out there. Um. Good, Tom, we early brief meeting, not, I don't, I don't. I think we discussed budget was mostly what we talked about. Um, nothing unusual.
Yeah.
I think whoever gets appointed to that position will really enjoy working with George. I think he's a terrific director. I I'm really happy with his selection.
Thanks, David.
Uh, I attended virtually the cog meeting, uh last week's cog meeting. Um, and um primarily the um the business was to um make decisions on recommendations to the board of county commissioners on um grant proposals. Uh, so we did that. Um, unfortunately, the city of Ellensburg's proposed project didn't make the cut. Um, but uh the issue was uh that cog decided um earlier this year that we would uh limit funding on this round of grants until the tip study um strategies were better defined. And to also allow some funding for ongoing projects. So I think it's a balance, but um I think overall, I think we we uh accomplished that. Um, and I would like to request an excused absence for, I believe, the study session for January eighteenth. So and
second.
A late arrival for the council meeting. I have a conflicting meeting uh which should end at seven, so I find to be there as quickly after that as I can.
Uh, so we have motion second for excused absence for Councilmember Miller for the study session on January eighteen.
You can make it for both if you like. I expect I will be able to attend the meeting, but late arriving.
That's fine. Okay, so the motion is for is for an excused absence for the meetings on January. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye, that motion carries.
I'll have, thank you.
Thank you.
And uh happy new year.
How is that?
Thank you.
Uh, so at the utility advisory, the main event was talking about the rate stabilization fund. Um, which is the the money from the the gas sales to Texas. Um, and we are still working through that. Uh, in on the environmental commission, um there there is a group working towards bike month um celebration ideas. Uh, development disabilities was canceled and um the airport advisory committee is um still um discussing uh the rules on for construction and stuff on the operations on the um at the airport and the status of the runway seven two nine.
Two five.
Two five and um uh and I'm working on the the economic like development um subcommittee uh to um to try and move forward with leasing of those Bowers Business Park properties. Um, and they are trying to um get some of the old like that old pallet company, uh get that cleaned up uh and and that sort of thing. So uh it's it's all moving forward, but as usual with government, very slowly. Um, actually, I had a thought. So regarding council appointments to boards and commissions, we usually do it in January at our first meeting, but since council Lamb, member Lamb's position will be filled shortly thereafter. Should we wait or um, okay?
I mean, we don't, I mean, we're gonna roll over into a new mayor, but the conversation that we've had would be logical to wait until the eighteen, until you had it for council.
So we plan to appoint a new council member on the eighteenth and then and then.
It's gonna depend on the number of folks, but I mean, at this point, you know, my recollection of the conversation with council was that we would.
Great. Yep, um, that's it.
Um, I missed the majority of my meetings in November for family vacation and then in December for a medical leave, so I really finished uh my my tenure strong.
We'll, we'll take the picture of that.
No. No, this is mine now. Um, but they did the Ellensburg Arts Commission and the Library Board did have their retreats, so pay attention to those minutes. Those are usually uh good times. I was sad to miss them. Um, and then I talked to the city manager briefly about this. You will see me again with my Girl Scout troop. I am the Cookie Mom, and we would like to bring our five, six, and seven-year-old daisies and brownies to do the pledge of allegiance sometimes. Sometime would be best. So stay tuned for a really good time. Um, uh, for public health, we're really just trying to encourage boosters right now. We've got um any, anybody over sixteen can get them, should get them a few better vaccine uh six months or more ago. Um, and with the rapidly increasing rates in other parts of the country, that's just a really good way for us to not hopefully take on some of those impacts locally. Um, and I didn't get to stay on council as long as I would have liked, but I'm excited for this new phase in my my family's lives and I will be back. So just, just uh to stay here for a little while. I'll see you in twenty twenty-six.
That's your cue.
Okay, so uh we had, I had all my meetings last week. Uh, we led off with the D E I Commission on Tuesday. Uh, we had a really nice uh meeting with uh the head of the Transportation Department. We've been, Nicole has been scheduling a department head to come in and speak to us about what they do uh in terms of diversity and inclusion. Uh, and we're trying to, we're just trying to get a sense of what this city's already doing in the departments uh for possible uh connections and partnerships in the future. We did reach consensus on a land acknowledgement statement uh to present that we want to bring forward to council probably in February. Um, we'll spend our January meeting talking about uh the recommended uses that we might suggest for that statement. So hopefully in February, we'll get that to council for uh your uh consideration of the adoption for that. Uh, met the Law and Justice uh Commission and Utility Advisory Committee. Uh, the discussion on the rate uh thing was very interesting. It's it'll be a challenge. And I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you. Do you want to put your hat back on then?
Well, I could.
Rich.
So uh Planning Commission meeting, lots of conversations about the comp plan amendments, uh centrifuges and just um to kind of reset the tone, you know, I think that uh while we haven't necessarily been as aligned uh with our economic development and centrifuges, you know, as a council, um I'm attempting to for to bridge that gap and make sure that those, that communication is occurring because it's an important group and they're trying to do what they believe to be the right things. And so I'll keep working on that. Um, I did attend the steer committee meeting, which is effectively a fifteen mile stretch of I ninety to three lanes between Easton and Clayellum. Um, a little bit uncomfortable with some of the things they were asking in terms of sort of support. Um, a little bit outside my comfort level on in terms of advocating for public safety, you know, very clearly in different jurisdictions. That having been said, it has an indirect effect on Ellensburg and Commerce, and so it is not a, it is not a bad thing. It's just focused on a different area of the county. Uh, the meeting was primarily on funding opportunities, which um, you know, historically, our community's been very good about accessing those, the infrastructure dollars and grants and such. We've gotten our share in some cases, probably out done other communities. Um, we would like to just recognize uh the work that was done um over the last sixteen years on the behavioral and mental health. Uh, one tenth of one percent sales tax, um which is now uh passed uh for a six-year period. Um, and point out that uh the city, while it doesn't have formal on participation in that process, the Behavioral Health and Recovery Board of the county uh will make the funding recommendations uh to the county. I don't necessarily think there needs to be a formal city representative, but um, you know, this is important that the money gets spent in a way that very clearly returns on that investment that the community's making. Um, so it it's important. I don't know if that's something we want to reach out and put formal representation on that board or not. Um, I previously did serve on it. It it happens to overlap with council meetings, so it's going to be difficult.
Could we suggest someone from the fleece department to serve on that?
Yes, you absolutely. That would be a very good way to to go about that. Um, uh, and then the other piece to this is, and this is something moving forward into twenty twenty-two, the Kinnis Pass County Health Network is s- you know, sort of quietly in a lot of ways accomplishing a lot of things that a lot of other communities aren't doing, and it's with a lot of participation. It, but we're in some ways sort of doing what every community sort of hopes they would be able to do um by interlocking all of the different elements of healthcare and you know, trying to fill those gaps and streamline the process. Um, and um, I'll, I'm the board chair for, I don't know how long I signed up for that, but um, so I will represent the city's interest there. And then finally, one thing, um, just uh regarding COVID. Um, you know, I know everybody has fatigue and wants to take their masks off, and we're looking at probably another six-week bump in COVID. We transferred out three longtime residents of this county who were very sick, innovated, um just in the last seven days out of this county. We're seeing hospitals fill up again. Uh, today we transported, we had to go to Walla Walla, find a bed for a patient, and we transported a kid to Mary Bridge um uh two days ago. And so those transports take our apparatus and our crews out of this community for five to eight hours. And if we get caught on the wrong side of the pass, it's thirteen hours. So the impacts of COVID are very real and the staffing shortages in healthcare and and I want them to go away.
I think it's fair.
Okay, can I comment on the thing that Rich said? So um, he brought up centrifuges. Um, and I I had a conversation with the manager today. I think, I think part of the problem I had with the Economic Development Chapter is it needed a good edit, and we didn't have time because it comes to us late and we don't see the, see anything until the end and and then we're supposed to act on it. And so I I I've asked maybe to evaluate a different process um so that we can.
I would suggest that was the direction coming out of our review and doc.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I I and correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe, well, maybe it's just a conversation you and I had also. I can't remember now.
Yeah, I I believe the planning commission has actually added that to their work plan to look at our comprehensive plan docketting process um and schedule. So absolutely.
Because I mean, yeah, they only get to four months to go through the whole process and if you're writing whole chapters, it's.
Well, I mean, even the D E I realistically, I mean, was, you know, a similar process in terms of the ability for us to edit uh on the dais at the point at which we're attempting to.
Yeah.
Dog. And I mean, I mean, okay, um, so just again to reinforce, but Rich and Tristan are both saying, just, um, I've been watching um news and if you're in England, you get jabbed. Um, I don't think it's the worst vision for, but for God's sakes, people start getting jabbed. If you haven't, I mean, it's just insane at this point. Um, and if you have people you know who are going to the hospital and are having difficulty getting through the E R or admitted because of individuals who were not jabbed and are now in the hospital, to me, that's a, that's a problem. That's an issue, and you need to recognize and acknowledge that. Um, I was at the cog meeting also that David attended, and I think it was a good process. I think we ended up in a good spot for both the communities that were funded, uh Roslyn and Clayellum. Um, I had the opportunity to sit in on the exit uh interview or exit audit exit. Um, city manager was recognizing the quality of our staff. Um, it's a clean audit, folks. Um, for however, a million dollars, it was a clean audit. Um, and if you're familiar with I mean, auditors always want to find something and they didn't. Um, and it's a real tribute to our our finance department and the and the folks that are doing that work. Uh, and the compliments that uh were provided and given to our staff, uh the collaboration, the communication, the openness. Uh, was just check every box. It was just a, just a real, actually a pleasure to sit through the uh through that egg. Was just check every box, it was just, just a real, actually a pleasure to sit through the, through that exit. Also had an opportunity. To meet with. The director of the I Innovative, what is it, I for I, the Innovation and Entrepreneurial Institute of Central. As well as a professor in that, in that program and the dean of the School of Business with Commissioner Wright. And the city manager. Central's positioning itself to do, well, actually, they have to do a SEDS, but they have the opportunity to become, it's, it's a, like a small business center or a business center. Which, which really, I think, with the tip strategy that's working, that's moving forward and the work that Central's doing is really going to position ourselves. Significantly differently than we have in, in, in the past, it was really, again. People are willing and open to collaboration, they're looking to communicate and they're looking to work together, and I think if we can leverage Central as that resource. We, we will all be a better community for it, also the opportunity to go to Rewire Conference, it's a nonpartisan. Group that sponsors the conference, talking about the next legislative session, but I think my major takeaway from that. Was a conversation we had about police reform, I know the chief and the manager have talked to us about the issues that arose from the legislation that's been passed over the last. Legislative session, went to a session with one of the prime sponsors of those legislative reports or, or the initial bills. As well as the executive director of the Police and Sheriff's Association for the, for the state of Washington and a. City count, cities, Seattle City Council person. It was very clear that on all sides, there's a recognition that what they hoped to accomplish was not being accomplished. And that they feel like that it will be one of the primary things that are addressed as they go into this session. They also spoke to not waiting for the end of the session. For those actions to take place, so there's apparently a mechanism, much the way we can do with an emergency. They, they can actually pass legislation that would allow that, that modified legislation to come into effect by February. And I don't, I know exactly what that looks like, but, but all of the, not all, but many of the issues that, that Chief Wade has, has surfaced for us. Appear to me to be at least be on part, part of the conversation, and I think we will see modifications in some of that to probably a. A more center point that's, that is both protective of the community, because that is significantly one of the issues. But also respects the rights of individuals. So that was good, I, I'm good, I just, I want to thank. Our two departing council members in so many ways, and I mean this in a positive way, we would not be where we are without your input. The energy that you've invested in making this a better community and, and the contributions you've made to making this a better council. It's recognized, it's acknowledged, and I thank you, so. And I don't know where I'll be in twenty twenty six. But that said, I think we've reached the end of the agenda, I think we can be adjourned, again, thank you, have a great holiday, folks. And see you in the new year.